... meeting, I would ask you all to please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a little reminder to my board behind each of you, there is a sign with voting information and the date for the vote, and we would ask that you would, each of you, take one home with you and put it up in an appropriate location so that the community can see that. Thank you. So first order of business is recognition of visitors. Anyone wishing to make a public comment can do so by coming up to either one of the two microphones. We'd ask you to please state your name, and you will be limited to three minutes. There is another, there is another time at the end of the meeting for that as well. Anyone wishing to say anything right now? Okay, we're going to move on to our committee reports. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Board of Members. Rafael Ortiz, Cornwall. I come to you as a concerned Cornwall homeowner. I approached you this last session, and I pleaded with you to please consider not raising this budget in consideration of all the neighbors that are not working and that have suffered through this past year. If you want to at least consider that again, you have an opportunity again tonight to do so. I just arrived from New York City. The train station is empty. That represents all of our neighbors that are not working in the city. Half of them are working from home, and the other half are collecting unemployment checks. This is a real need. This is about shared sacrifice. This is what Cornwall is all about. You have that opportunity tonight. But I wanted to point out some questions that can motivate you again, that perhaps reconsider. Our neighboring school district, Newburgh, had a very courageous board member, last minute, that after learning about the school aid that we would receive or that they would receive similar to us, said that in his own conscience, he just couldn't support any increases. He just couldn't do that, considering that people are suffering. So all I'm asking you tonight is, please, you have the opportunity to introduce a resolution. It wouldn't cut any pay. It just wouldn't add anything unnecessary. For example, you propose to replace a cooling tower. You propose to replace a gym floor. You propose to replace a library floor on this budget. What happened with the planning? This is what we have, the Capital Improvement Reserve Fund, so we can utilize that money for these needs. So consider that, at least. That would reduce our budget utilizing that reserve fund. So you have the opportunity tonight to be courageous, to understand the plight of those neighbors, to take this moment so we can all come together and utilize this summer, utilize the benefit that we have, a young, passionate superintendent, so we can utilize this summertime to bring our community together, our teachers, our students, that we can plan for the future, so that way this time next year, we've all sat around the table to have this discussion.
Thank you, Rafael.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, moving along to item C, we have committee reports. Larry, I'm going to start with you, please.
Okay, I'm going to give an Orange County School Boards Association report. At our last meeting, there was a presentation on best practices for staying engaged with our students during the pandemic. The speakers were Megan Gilbert from Orange Oaks to Bosse's, the principal, Janine Schlechtner, who's a social worker from Bosse's, Lydia Woodward was a social worker from Bosse's, and Darcy Miller, the Commissioner of the Department of Social Services for Orange County and Mental Health. And they presented some very powerful videos as to how the pandemic affected the children and outlined all the support options that are available. And Darcy Miller supplied handouts, which I attached, had attached to the board docs, so you all have copies of them. There was a flyer asking for help in building a virtual library of programs and services for children, youth, and their families. A flyer on immediate crisis support or information. And there were two joint letters from SED and the New York State Office of Mental Health outlining a lot of the support mechanisms that are available to parents and students. So, and other family members. So one of my thoughts was is that perhaps we could add this information to our websites and have it available for our parents. There was some other business at the meeting. The NISBA Conference in New York this year is October 24th to 26th, and it's interesting, the, the business meeting where the voting takes place is going to be virtual, but the rest of the conference will be live. More information to come on that. They're still kind of working out the logistics. And at our next Orange County School Board meeting, which is Wednesday, June 2nd, again, it's, it's virtual, but we're all invited to attend. We'll be honoring the retiring board members and the district clerks slash administrative assistants for all the school districts. So I encourage you all to log on. The information will be coming out and will be sent to, Linda sends that out to all of us when we get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Brendan?
Thanks, Nancy. I guess the one pertinent note is for the upcoming Board Budget Forum, which is this coming Thursday. That's going to be 8:00 PM to 9:00 PM via Zoom. Going to share out the link again in the coming days, but a good opportunity for the, the public to, you know, ask questions directly from the board. We've done this in the past, in person. People may remember it. We had them at middle school, I think, library as well. And so, again, eight to nine, board members will be there. Bring your questions, and we'll bring the facts.
Thank you. Any other committees? Thank you. Moving along, we're going to have Mr. Dade give his update.
Thank you, Nancy. Good evening, everyone. Just a few brief updates. One, just couldn't be more excited to welcome back all of our students for in-person instruction beginning on Monday, May 17th. So it was a long journey, but we got there before the end of the year. Luckily, with vaccines and a myriad of other factors playing in, the rate brought us to the substantial range over the weekend. So we're prepared for the pivot at our seventh through 12th grade levels on Monday, May 17th. The other update that I wanted to provide is by way of universal pre-K. As you read in the news and some emails and impressors, districts around the state were provided funding for either new pre-K funding or to add to their existing funding. For here in Cornwall, there's an allocation of up to 60 seats. So that's great news. Anytime you get additional funding from the state is great. If we were to have it our way, we'd have gotten this news back in October so that we could plan accordingly with our community-based organization. So some immediate next steps that we took is we reached out to community-based organizations that are on the approved state list. They've received emails from our team just inviting them to a meeting. We like to go to their site, get to know a little bit more about their organization, their program, and the like. Harvey and I participated in a webinar that was run by the business organization for the state. And then Harvey had a follow-up call with the head person in charge to make sure that we had all the facts with regards to what the funding entails. So we are looking at external partnerships right now, because as you know, space is a premium here in our building, so we do not have the space to just add a series of classrooms to our building. So we're going to be looking at possible partnerships. A few have already accepted our invitation, so those meetings will begin as early as next week. So we'll keep everyone apprised. And the funding is, it's a, we'd like to get this done as soon as possible. There is a mid-year possibility that the state said we would still get full funding. Everyone's really scrambling around the state how to make this happen. A lot of organizations have already had their lotteries and already in the planning with regards to the capacity in their, in their spaces. So we'll keep everyone apprised with any, any information.
Thank you, Terry. Just a few things for myself to share with you this evening. Senator Scoofus reached out to me last week, and we had a great chat on the phone. He assured me that he is continuing to advocate for us, the schools, and all of our children. In regard to the football field, I did walk the field with our head of Buildings and Grounds, Walter Moran, and also with Mr. Dade. Louis Argenio walked it at a separate time when he was available. We discussed several things. One of the ongoing concerns has and continues to be the inability to water the field. Due to the late extreme snowfall of 30 inches, the field was cleared, but about four inches of snow was left so as not to damage the ground, which was not frozen solid. Once melted, the field was quite muddy. The field was aerated and seeded, but as football started right after that, being it was played during a different season, there was not adequate time for full regrowth. We do have several ideas pending as to how to perpetuate better field conditions, and we will update you as things evolve. I would like to thank all of our teachers, especially as Teacher Appreciation Week was last week, so we certainly appreciate each and every one of you and all the jobs that you do each and every day for our district and our children. Congratulations to Mrs. Palumbo. She was named Middle School Teacher of the Year by the, by her, by her peers for the state, and so we are very excited for that. Congratulations to her, congratulations to the middle school, and also to the district. And as Terry mentioned, we are continuing to update and change our end-of-the-year plans as quickly as possible, and it has been referred to as a moving target, which it certainly has been, but we are always ever hopeful that things will just continue to get better. Thank you. So now we're going to move on to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine members' matters which are included. Is there any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda at this time? Okay, we have items two through eight. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda as submitted by the Superintendent of Schools, items two through eight. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you. And next, Mr. Sotlin. We're going to have our annual budget hearing, and Harvey, can you start by explaining my infamous question that I always asked you before I was on the board? Why is, why are we having this tonight? Thank you.
Sorry. Okay, that is a common question that we get every year, and it's a question we get oftentimes because the budget has already been adopted by the board. So why do we have to have a hearing after that fact? And the reason for that is it's required by law. They call it a hearing, but it's really nothing more than a, a public summarization of the budget that the board, in fact, did pass already. So with that, let's go through it. The first item here is a snapshot of the budget itself. The proposed budget is 76.6 million. It's up about $2 million or 2.81%. The tax levy itself, which is part of how we fund this, is just short of $51 million. That's an increase of about $900,000. Even though the budget's going up 2.81%, the tax levy is only 1.79%. And it's important to note that we are doing so with a projected use of fund balance of 2,250,000. One of the things that we are required to do in the, in the hearing is to delineate the budget between the administrative, the program, and the capital components. Again, this is categories that are identified by the State Education Department that we have to adhere to. And as you can see there, there's a comparison of the 2021-22 versus the current year, 2021, as well as the increases. The increase to the program, which is where we always want to put as much money as possible, because that's really what speaks toward the classroom, is up about 70, it represents about 75% of the total increase. If you note below, the administrative, the program, and the capital definitions, it's important to note that under program, it's just not what happens in the classroom. It includes transportation. It includes athletics, extracurricular as well. Additionally, the administrative component is not just oftentimes what people think of as administrators. As you can see there, it has a lot of our contractual legal, auditing, insurance, as well as a host of different Bosse's expenditures that we incur. And if you notice, the percentages for this proposed budget, it's the same as the current year. As I mentioned, we always like to get more percentage or more money into the program. We're happy even just to keep it where it is, which is what we're doing. We never want to lose or go downward. So what are we adding to this budget? This is the list of items that are in the proposed budget. What I want to take note of is that we always talk about the three A's, the academics, the arts, and the athletics. We are touching on every single one of them in this list. Additionally, we're also focusing on buildings and facilities. We have not only personnel to clean them and maintain them better, but we're also taking care of a couple of different items here. One is the floor in the library, the middle school, and one is the floor in the auxiliary gym. As mentioned, both of these floors have asbestos in them. They have to be done. We don't have the time to wait for a capital project, and because we can do so in the budget, we're going to take advantage of it. When we look at the revenue side, how do we fund that budget that we just talked about? As I mentioned, the increase is about $2 million, 2.81%. State aid is up about 3.4 million, budget to budget. Miscellaneous income is down about 350. Our fund balance is down about 1.85. Again, we're going from 4.1 million this year down to 2.250. And lastly, the tax levy, which is 1.79% increase. So what does this mean to the taxpayers? Based on the value of your house, not the assessed value, but the fair market value, so that people have a better understanding, because usually people know specifically what they think they can sell their house for versus what their tax assessment is. So if your house is valued, fair market value of $350,000, you're looking at $153 a year or $13 a month. I've also included down below the seven year, the past seven years with respect to the tax levy. The average of the seven years is 1.97%. It has been coming down. This year is no exception to that, at 1.79. Contingency budget. What happens if the budget gets voted down? If the budget gets voted down the first time, the board has a decision to make. They can go right to a contingency budget, or they can put it back up. And when they put it back up, it could be lower, the same, or even higher. If it gets voted down the second time, they have no option. They must adopt a contingency budget. The most important aspect of going on a contingency budget is that our tax levy cannot increase a single dollar. So whatever our tax levy is this year has to be the tax levy for next year. For this proposed budget, that reflects $895,900. So we would have to cut that from the budget. And lastly, the upcoming budget vote is on May 18th, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM at the middle school gymnasium. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey. Okay, so we're up to recognition of visitors again. Is there, if there's anyone that wishes to speak on any item, we'd ask you to please come to one of the microphones, state your name, and please remember that you have three minutes.
My name is Brian Colcent. I'm one of the physicians over at West Point and father of four children in the Cornwall School District. And I want to speak because I'm disappointed that we are not, that we are so quick to shut down the schools when even a questionable quarantine comes up. However, when there's an abundance of data to support going back to full-time in-person, we're slow to pivot to that change. The very criteria that the school board has laid out to indicate a pivot to full-time in-person instruction has been met as of this weekend. We are currently still meeting that mark, and we are not full-time in-person. Currently, there are several other school districts that are meeting that mark, but we are the exception, or one of the few exceptions. When the board was asked why we don't pivot as quickly for full-time in-person as we do with quarantining, it was reiterated by Mr. Dade that, quote, "We are going to bring our seventh through 12th grade students back for five days of in-person instruction on Monday, May 17th, as articulated in our letter to the community last week." These pivots require significant planning, particularly when you are predicting when the data will move into a cleared range. Unlike the pivots that occurred for quarantine, this pivot to full-time in-person is within our control, thus not requiring us to spring it on our students, families, and staff at the last minute, end of quote. But I would argue that the quarantines are more disruptive to the students and the families. And I would urge the, I would urge the board that, to please be humble about their mistakes this year, to learn from them and to plan better reform next year so we don't end up on the bottom of the list for full-time in-person instruction in Orange County. To not only depend on the students and the families for their high achievements in the CCSD, but to also give them all the tools that our district can set the students up for success, which includes that full-time in-person instruction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Hugh Liebert of Cornwall Hudson. So three questions for me about the budget. First, it would really help if you guys could illuminate the process you used to identify the needs that you're spending on. As best I can tell, they were not part of a long-term plan that you've, you know, developed. They also seem not to have been driven by any assessment results. So it would help a lot to know how these needs were identified as the ones that we should spend on this year. Second question, I'd like to know how you guys are accounting for the long-term costs of the new expenditures that you're making. It seems like you're taking a lot of one-time money and spending it in a way that we're going to have to renew for a long time to come. Have you considered the three-to-five-year window, even longer than that? As much, most of these positions will be around for a very long time. Third question, the one long-term expense that we have heard about, long-term need that we have heard about as affecting us, you know, 10, 20 years from now, really long-term, is capital expenses. I don't understand why the board's not taking this one-time money that we have and using it to spend exclusively on capital, given how much we've heard about how deeply we need money to spend on capital expenses for the last several years. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to, oh, I'm sorry, go right ahead. Yep.
Thank you again, Rafael Ortiz, Cornwall. So you all have, you will be given, after this public hearing, a form to be signed by Harvey Scotland that represents that you've reviewed both the budget, the expenses, and the expenditures from last year, and that you all and the expenditures from last year, and that you also have formulated this budget based on your academic review. Based on my presentation last week, or the last meeting, my understanding is that you never received an academic report, neither did you review the expenditures line by line from last year. So therefore, it leaves open to question the lawfulness of this, of this budget. I beg you to please reconsider. You can still change this. You can, you can come together and we can review this next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to board comments. Larry, we're going to start with you.
Thank you. Want to congratulate Mrs. Palumbo, that's quite a, an achievement. And I'm sure at some point, we will do a full-blown recognition for her here. Being a former teacher, I'm not going to say a former educator, because I think it's, once you're an educator, you're always an educator. Maybe that goes for being a teacher also. I want to thank our teachers. I know what you have been through is not easy. In a small way, I have, I have seen some of the issues that you have come across. I've worked with my grandchildren remotely, so I can, I understand to a certain extent what you're going through. I want to thank you for doing it. Not an easy job, and anybody who thinks teaching is easy is smoking something. That's, it is one of the hardest jobs. I once had an argument with a parent when I was teaching that, yeah, I know, it's legal now. I had an argument with a parent once, when I was teaching, and finally, I said to the parent, "I'll make you a deal. You spend a day in my classroom, I'll spend a day in your, at your business." I never heard from him again. So I can feel for you. I also want to say that the, in the budget, the needs that have been laid out to us were done with justification. And this goes back to before last January, when these were brought out. So we have, as a board, listened to justifications for these positions.
Hi. I'd like to also say congratulations to Mrs. Palumbo. This type of statewide distinction is absolutely amazing, and I think it's a testament to all the great work that she has done in our system. Congratulations to all the teachers on Teacher's Appreciation Week. You know, it's been a crazy year, and you've had to do what you learned to do in a manner you never anticipated having to do. So thank you so much for that, and for everything that you had, had put into it. And, you know, to, to some of the commentary, obviously, doing it remotely was, was not ideal either for the students or, or for the parents, but I'm delighted that we're getting everybody back next week. You know, however that's regarded in terms of the steps that it took to got, to get there, I'm just happy that we're getting to that point. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what everyone is saying about Teacher Appreciation Week. I know it's, it's common to say that, you know, fill-in-the-blank is the backbone of the organization, but I think it's, it's more like the teachers are the DNA of the district, really affects everything that we are, everything that we do. And our DNA in this district is very strong, so thank you for that. And also, a huge congratulations to Mrs. Palumbo. That is an extraordinary honor, and we look forward to more celebrations of that honor in the future. You know, just a word about the budget. Every budget is about choices and priorities, and as Larry said, we did have, all of the positions that are being added to this year's budget were at part of presentations last year. As a reminder, we didn't add any positions last year, aside from much-needed technol, two technology positions, which turned out to be essential and prescient decisions, based on how much we relied on technology this year. So we did consider, and we did have a methodical approach for evaluating those needs. As to whether this funding is one, a one-time deal, that's a very good question, and I asked it myself. It was actually one of my big concerns a month or two ago. But after personal conversations with our legislative representatives and conversations with the district, you know, that, I was assured, and I understand to be correct, those are increases in our foundation aid, which is not a one-time grant, and that's already been established, the rates have been established for the next three years. And foundation aid generally goes in one direction. It goes up at the absolute worst, it hardly, it never even freezes, it just doesn't go up at the rate at which perhaps some school advocates would wish. So as far as school funding goes, the fact that these increases are included in foundation aid is about as safe a bet as you can get. So having these positions funded through that mechanism, I think, is not a risky proposition, and I feel very safe about having that money in the future. And as far as, you know, the capital, the money being used for capital, I, you know, again, we, we have to balance our priorities here. And any budget has several variables. Academic, capital, our obligation to the taxpayers. You remove one of those variables, the equation becomes a lot simpler. If you don't have as much of a fidelity to the taxpayers, you can raise the budget however you like. Conversely, if you don't have any fidelity to the students and addressing student needs, then yes, it would be a very easy decision to keep taxes where they are. But we don't have those easy decisions. We have to touch every box as well as we can and balance those priorities. And I feel strongly that this budget does that. We had a lot of pent-up needs over the past couple of years that we, as a board, have a responsibility to address. We're doing that in a way that does not raise taxes as much as we can with regard to the tax cap, but keeps it within what I believe is a fiscally responsible range. So now we're coming into a vote, we're asking the community to support a budget that is increasing by 1.79% from last year, but is doing a lot more than that 1.79 would indicate. And I feel satisfied, and in fact, proud of the work that this board has done to come to that point, and I look forward to the result of next week's vote. Thank you.
Brendan, it's always fun to follow you. Not that you stole my thunder, but I'm glad that you touched on some of the, not misconceptions, but, but, but the misinformation that may exist in terms of the budget and the use of the funds. And, and I think you covered it, so I'm not even going to go down that path and just say, Matt's not here. In all recognition of Matt Bannon, ditto to what you said. The, the one thing I will add, though, is when it comes to the funds that we are not spending, those are the federal funds, and we spent, I think, the last meeting or the one prior to that, talking about the use, and appropriate use of those funds. And I believe that total was somewhere in the five to six million dollar range, and it seemed to be, at least the preliminary consensus of the board, that that would be best used for capital projects, similar to what we heard, I believe, Mr. Lieber talk about. So, so that powder is dry, and we are still waiting for the, the building survey to be completed and then discussed as a board to figure out what our priorities will be moving forward in terms of tackling those infrastructural needs that have actually gone on, unmet for, for way too long. We, we talk about cause and consequence, and we think about the, the school year and how we were unable to do remote for those who needed to be remote, and it's because our infrastructure didn't meet our needs in terms of getting instruction streamed. That's a priority for the board to make sure that we don't have a repeat of these types of, of infrastructural insufficiencies, such that when the needs do arise, we'll be able to meet them on a timely basis. So, so I, I hope between Brendan and myself, just in, in trying to clarify what, what's actually going on, is that the money is not a one-time deal that we're spending now, and the monies that are going to be a one-time thing have yet to be earmarked in terms of how we will spend them. I think that's important for everyone to, to understand, and if I'm wrong, please, someone at this table, Terry, Harvey, anyone, please, please set the record straight on that. So I'll, I'll presume that we were right, so that's good. Because I think it's important to get the, the real information as it exists out there. Frustration. I, I, you know, this year, when I think of how to describe this year, frustration is another term that comes to mind. We heard Dr. Coulson talk about his frustration. I think, I think there's not a stakeholder within this district that's not frustrated with what has gone on this year. There are, there are a lot of fingers to blame and, or point at, and, and one of the things that I've learned in life is that when we start pointing fingers, be careful what you do, because there's always three coming back at you. And so that's not going to solve the problem. I think the way to solve the problem is to find ways that we can manage people's expectations, okay? And I understand that there was an expectation based on what was articulated, that we would pivot immediately. But life doesn't necessarily work that way, and I think we could do a better job of communicating what we mean. I don't believe that when the district put out the, hey, we anticipate in a forecasting basis, the trend lines suggest that we'll be substantial within the next, you know, days, weeks to come, that we knew for sure that this weekend, it was going to flip, all right? It could have flipped tonight, it could have flipped earlier. The fact of the matter, it has, and I think people have been given a dish, a sufficient warning that that's going to happen, so that they can make preparations to, to when that does execute, to be minimally impacted on the negative side. So, so I think there's a, a lot that we all can learn from communication, and I know we spend a lot of time now, this last year, in improving it, and I'm not saying that we're 100%, we're far from it, but I think that's one of the areas that I've learned throughout this year, that we can do a better job in, is communicating what we're, what we're planning, and, and what are the triggers that will get us there. I'd like to say kudos to Kate, that's a great honor for, for Mrs. Palumbo to have. Really impressive, the Cornwall continues to, to, to achieve greatness, not only at the student level, but also teachers, as well as the administrators, so hats off, it's a real, real team effort there. I want to also thank Larry for reminding me that May is Mental Health Month. It's very important, I, you know, I'd like to take, you know, Mental Health Day, if not a week, probably a year, I think we all need it. One of the things that I would like to see is some more emphasis within the district on addressing mental health, not just, here's some information or a number to call if you have a problem, but actually have some types of workshops and thoughts of sit-downs with not just the teachers or employees of the district, but also the kids, because I think they would really benefit from that. I know that they're not taking Regents exams this year, or the schedule's been pared back greatly, but hopefully we can find a way to, to accommodate that type of, of discussion, because I think it will definitely help them going forward. Lastly, I really look forward to getting in-person. Terry, thank you and your team for getting us this far. I hope we're able to sustain it throughout the remainder of this year. You know, God forbid we go into, in-person, only to then come back out of it, because change, change, as I heard earlier tonight, is painful, and it is painful, and kids, I think, have had enough change for the year. So, so if you look at the numbers, I think they'll support it, but I just want to thank you and your team for getting us to this point. It's been a difficult year, and thank you.
Well, first of all, I, I always looked, for all these years, oh, God, sorry about that. I always looked at teacher appreciation almost like a week, or it used to be a day, as the same thing I told my kids yesterday for Mother's Day, appreciate me all year long, you know? I, I like the flowers, but please, you know, that's even better, so you're appreciated all year long, and I would imagine that once, once, once a year for a week is nice, but I think it's nice to remember that all year long. My daughter's a teacher, and I know how hard she works, and how hard you all do. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Palumbo, that is an honor, an incredible honor, to bring to a school district. And I, I cannot say, when I saw that, I just was astounded at the type, I've never had my children in the district, my, my children have all graduated already and are older and in the workforce, but I've known about Cornwall, and its incredible reputation, and it's certainly well-deserved. I've been on the school board now, it'll be one year in June. And I have to say, I have 18 years' experience from another school district, Munro Woodbury, and I am extremely impressed at what I've seen here. The camaraderie, the respect the board has for each other, for the administration, and the also reciprocated respect that the administration has for this board, and its teachers, and its staff, including all the staff. I, I do have to just address one thing, as far as, this is something I've seen for years, it never changes, it doesn't matter what chair you sit in, in a school district, what school district, is that it comes to this time of year, and suddenly, it seems to be such a surprise, where are these numbers coming from? And I realize everybody's lives are very, very busy, but a budget process for next year is going to start in July. It's ongoing, it's always happening, numbers are being reviewed, people are looking at this. We're giving, we're given information full steam, it's true, to the board, starting after right around the new year. So in January, we start to get all these reports, they're not just given to us. And, and it's the only thing that I did find a little concerning tonight. I want everybody to understand that this is an ethical, honest process. Everything is done according to all school law and state requirements. And people can disagree or agree with what we include in a budget. Some, I forget, what is it, 70, how many, how much percent of the budget is, is already predetermined, that we don't really have control over it?
Almost all of it.
Almost all of it. I mean, like 90% or something, I don't know. And that remainder is, yes, it's, it's on us to determine. And the nice part about getting old, as my mother used to say, is you reach a stage where, you don't like what I say, you know, too bad, you know, because I'm old now. Well, all I'm saying is, we make the decision what we feel is best, that's what we were elected for. And if people don't, don't agree with that, then become more involved. But at this, this point is, is, as I said, it's been fully vetted, and I feel very strongly about what's been included in this, especially given the fact that we have children coming back in here with needs after a full year. And COVID has been expensive. So thank you, and I, thank you for listening.
Thanks to everybody's comments so far. I'll say ditto to everything that's been said. I wanted to say a few more things. I wanted to say a few more things, which is, a big thank you to the CCSD PTO Trust for running tomorrow night's Board of Ed Candidates Forum. We talked about the Budget Forum, which is on Thursday. This is like a week of forum fun. So tomorrow night, from 7:00 to 9:00, there's a Zoom link on the cornwollschools.com, and also in the newsletter that came out today. That newsletter, you know, what's it called, the Dragon News? This electronic newsletter, it showed up in my inbox this afternoon. And as I'm going through it, I'm realizing that, I teach on the college level, and, you know, my big mantra this year was always, you know, "We have to work on resilient," you know, "You all are resilient. The fact that you all are going through this, you know, at the young age that you are, you're going to be able to do anything going forward because of this, you know, what this pandemic has thrown at you." And in my class, we always talk about different ways to, you know, "There's a big, huge hurdle in front of us, so how do we get around it? What can we do? How can we think outside the box?" and the like. So I'm reading through this newsletter today, and I was just blown away by the fact that, despite the fact that we are in the middle of a pandemic, that such great things are still happening. You know, the Foreign Affairs Club ranked eighth in the nation at the national competition. We have all-star musicians, all-state musicians. We have amazing students who are going to these amazing, amazing schools. We have, you know, everybody's learning how to use technology in different ways, you know, from the music program, you know, having concerts that, where the kids all do their parts, and then it gets combined. Or, you know, the fact that the Drama Club is now saying, "You know what? Yes, we can't be inside, so we'll have the show outside." You know, I mean, that kind of creative thinking and thinking outside the box is one of the biggest things that I've seen a lot of people do this year, and I think that's really a testament to the fact that we all, as a group, and especially the teachers who are there every single day, you know, are really looking out for what they can do to normalize the situation for these kids, you know? Social-emotional development is such a big part in a non-pandemic year. The more teachers I talk to, and I have a lot of friends who teach in the district, when I hear about what they do to go above and beyond to make sure that their kids, not just their students, these kids are like their own children, they work so hard to be creative, to be, you know, think outside the box, and let these kids know that they're the adults, they're supporting, they're going to do what they need to do to try and give these kids a sense of normalcy, in a time when there is no real normal. So I really appreciate that, and I really appreciate the hard work that everybody's doing to really focus on the needs of the kids, not only on the mental health level, but also doing their absolute best to try and, you know, keep the kids moving forward so that they do continue to go to, you know, these phenomenal schools, or that they continue to go into, you know, the CTEC programs, and then come out and become a plumber, and all of these wonderful things that we so need, and that's continuing. You know, at the beginning of this pandemic, I thought, because my son graduated last year in 2020, and when that pandemic hit, you know, that was, that was crazy. I mean, he barely squeaked by. He was a good student, but I understand, you know, going remote is not an easy thing for a lot of people. So I really applaud everybody who really works to stay unified and keep these kids on track so they can continue. And then lastly, I just wanted, well, of course, congratulations to Kate. We'll have a parade, I'm sure, or something. And lastly, as far as graduation is concerned, a lot of people are asking me about graduation and how it's working. That's another area where I am totally blown away by the amount of work and the amount of input that's being taken by all the different players in the district to come up with an actual graduation. If you remember, last year, we had six graduations, back-to-back, over the course of two days. It was very, very crazy. This year, it's only going to be one day. We were going to have two, and then, don't you know, the regulations changed? And so now we're down to one day, and everybody gets to bring four guests, instead of just the two from, like, at the high school level. So I really appreciate all of the planning and all of the resiliency and just the ability to change with things that are changing at the drop of the hat. Again, I, you know, I did the teaching thing on K-12 level, now at the college level, and I can tell you that things that have happened this year, you would never have thought would need to happen. So I really appreciate everybody who's working so hard to keep the kids going in at least a forward direction. So, thank you very much.
So I've been Googling how to say ditto in other languages, so I could say that a few times. I think the master ditto has to cover everything here and echo what everybody has said, because I don't know that there's anything left to be said. I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Palumbo on her award, and I mean, it's a tremendous accolade, I think, by her colleagues across New York State. I think that's wonderful. Her assistant principal, you know, got that a few years ago. I think that's a wonderful trend to keep going, and maybe we can follow that a bit. That'd be fantastic. And I will echo Margaret here on the newsletter. I can't, you know, the newsletter came out, and what a wonderful list of accolades for all of our students, like you said. I think it's wonderful, and as they're reinventing ways to achieve and accomplish things. It's fantastic. If you've not had a chance to read it, I would encourage it. It's excellent. And, you know, Brendan and John, ditto to what both you gentlemen said. Well-spoken, well-said. Thank you for saying it, because there are mistruths, and there are things being shared that need clarity. I thank you guys for saying that. And I'll piggyback on what Larry mentioned earlier, and Theresa, this budget does start early, early on. This is not something that gets, you know, just kind of molded together with some loose clay and rolled down, and hoping somebody picks it up and says, "Hey, great job." It's work, it's effort. And lastly, happy belated Teacher's Appreciation Week to all the teachers. Wonderful job by everybody. I can't thank you enough. I know my kids thank you. I thank you on their behalf. I appreciate all your efforts, and I appreciate all that you do, again, in this time, day, and age. I think you guys have gone above and beyond to, you know, push through it and get it done for the kids. I'm elated to have our kids back in school for a time. Teri, and your team, thank you very much. I appreciate you getting them back and considering their safety, and they're thoughtfully bringing them back, and not having to, you know, potentially bring them back for a day and then send them back home for a day, because the next mandate changed, or the next number went up. So I appreciate that thoughtful approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. I want to thank everybody here. Thank you to my board, central admin, and all of our staff. Thank you to our students, who continue to remind us why we are here. A big shout-out to the students who helped with Riverside. It was a phenomenal turnout from the students in this district, so good for all of them. A big shout-out to all of our student competitors who have done so well, sports, academics, and arts. And the biggest shout-out to all of our students who have hung in there, and we are so very proud of all of you. Something that I just realized I didn't mention in my president's update, we've had some concern with, you know, "Why are certain districts able to go back? We can't go back." You know, there's been all these restrictions. So I did reach out to some former colleagues of mine that are still teaching in the Monroe Woodbury School District. Monroe Woodbury High School went back full-time about a week or so ago, but they only had 50% of their students that were opting to go back in person. So every district is very different, every school is very different, and every circumstance is every different. So I did want to share that, that we certainly have reached out to people that we know in the field. Some things have been floating around that I want to address, and, yes, indeed, there is something morally wrong when people continue to attack the integrity of any of us sitting here. It is morally wrong when this board and this district, that has given its heart and soul to the school community, is slammed for making decisions to better our students. You cannot compare the City of Newburgh School District, which receives a tremendous amount of federal and state funding due to their circumstances, with most other districts in this county, whether Cornwall, Warwick, Washingtonville, et cetera. I have yet to hear the same couple of people, year after year, holler at Albany to change how schools in New York are funded. Where is that outrage? I challenge these same people, couple of people, to sit with me and face-to-face tell me what my individual board members have done wrong. Come out from behind your keyboard, or come out from the hit-and-run of commenting at a meeting and then running out. This board has integrity. Unlike those that castigate us and throw rocks at us, we can explain, re-explain, and explain again. And then, like in the past, we are called liars. Facts mean nothing to some, because after all, I must stay up late at night and spin fairy tales to share. And no, the district did not save money this past year, because unlike what some still think, we never closed. Thank you, all you teachers. You were there every minute of every day. Surprise! And COVID preventions and supplies actually cost a lot more, even though we did receive some monetary funding for them. We are looking forward to the coming weeks of the rest of our students coming back, those families that choose. But it's not like flipping a switch, and at 7:00 a.m. on a Monday morning, everyone can head back in all grades just like that. The onerous word, pivoting, cannot be enacted instantaneously when we need to plan in every capacity at every level, building, busing, food services, custodial, staffing, et cetera, for hundreds of students, with zero help from the Orange County Department of Health. So here is to the next several weeks. I thank you all. I thank everyone for coming tonight. Those of you that shared your feelings, I thank you all, and please take care. We are going to exit into executive session to discuss personnel matters, and we will not be making any decisions or conducting any formal business at that time. Can I have a motion to convene to executive session? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you.